So with that, good evening and welcome to the October 19th, 2021 Plenary Commission meeting. For everyone attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please note that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, there's two options. For those of you using online Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the touchscreen. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. When it is your turn to speak, you will be muted and given three minutes to address the commission. Please note that you may only speak once per agenda item. And Michael, would you give us a hand taking roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Morgan, absent. Commissioner Madden, here. Commissioner Leffen, here. Commissioner Johnson, here. Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon, here. And Chair Beasate, here.
All right, and Commissioner Johnson, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Gladly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. With that, we'll move on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is September 7th, 2021. Anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Harmon?
I'll move that we approve the minutes. I skimmed them, they seemed fine.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, anyone with a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those, or, Michael, is it a roll call for this?
For minutes, sure, we can do a roll call. Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye.
So that brings us to September 21st, 2021. Do we have a motion for those minutes? Anyone?
All motion, we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I can second.
We have a motion and a second for the September 21st minutes. Roll call vote again, please.
Hey, Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden?
I'll abstain, I was not present.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item two, for public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone watching from home that would like to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. Do we have anyone in the audience with their hands raised or looking to speak with us? Michael, can you see anyone on your side?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item three, conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No, okay. Then we will move on to item four, public hearings. 2230 Fleetwood, and this is, staff is recommending we continue to November 16th, 2021. Anyone have comments or continue?
I move that we continue to November 16th, 2021. I move that we continue to November 16th, 2021. I move that we continue to November 16th, 2021.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second for the September 21st minutes. Roll call vote again, please.
Hey, Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden?
I'll abstain, I was not present.
Okay. Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye. Thank you. Very good. All right, so we'll move on to item two, for public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone watching from home that would like to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. Do we have anyone in the audience with their hands raised or looking to speak with us? Michael, can you see anyone on your side?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item three, conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No, okay. Then we will move on to item four, public hearings. 2230 Fleetwood, and this is, staff is recommending we continue to November 16th, 2021. Anyone have comments or continue?
I move that we continue to November 16th, 2021.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
All right, we have a motion, second. And when Michael's done with his call, he can help us with the roll call vote, please. Michael Smith, you're here with us, I see you on the screen. Would you be so kind as to help us with the roll call vote, please?
Sure, well, I'm gonna pause right here for a moment. I think he might be checking on the last motion you guys made just to make sure. So we'll wait to hear from Michael right now.
That was Commissioner Morgan having trouble with the link. Okay, so I apologize where we're at.
We were on item 4A, and we were looking at staff recommendation to continue to November 16th.
Correct, yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Would you give us a hand with the roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Morgan, coming soon, hopefully. Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to item B, which is 1723 Hickory. And this is also a staff recommendation to continue to November 16th, 2021. Anyone might want to make a comment or a motion?
Okay, a motion to continue it, if that's what they want.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Michael, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morgan, coming soon. Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye.
All right, so that takes us to item 5A, which is a study session regarding recent housing law updates and the submitted SB 35 Intensity Bonus Project Overview.
Okay, let's see. Hopefully you can, you're able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Oh, good evening, Commissioners. This item is similar to the presentation that Pamela did to the City Council last evening on the new state laws plus some existing state laws. And it's always good to, even if you're from Michael, uh, can you see anyone on your side? Uh, no? Okay. Then we'll, uh, move on to item three, uh, conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No? Okay. Then we will move on to item four, public hearings. Twenty-two thirty Fleetwood. And this is, uh, staff is recommending, recommending we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, anyone have comments or continue?
I move that we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right. We have a motion, second. And when Michael's done with his call, he can help us with the roll call vote, please. Michael Smith, you're here with us. I see you on the screen. Would you be so kind as to, uh, help us with a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Well, I'm gonna, gonna pause right here for a moment. I, I think he might be checking on the last motion you guys made just to make sure. So, um, we'll wait to hear from Michael right now.
Yeah, that was, that was Commissioner Morgan having trouble with the link. So, okay. So I apologize where we're at.
Uh, we were on item four A, and we were looking at staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Uh, would you give us a hand with the roll call vote, please?
Uh, uh, certainly. Commissioner Morgan, uh, coming, coming soon, hopefully. Commissioner Madden, aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye. All right. So with that, we'll move on to item B, which is seventeen twenty-three Hickory. And this is also a staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, anyone might want to make a comment or a motion?
Okay, make a motion to continue it if that's what they want.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Michael, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morgan, uh, coming soon. Uh, Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leffen?
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo, excused. Commissioner, Vice Chair Harmon?
Aye.
And Chair Beasate?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to item five A, which is a study session regarding recent housing law updates and the submitted SB thirty-five intensity bonus project overview.
Okay. Let's see. Hopefully you can, uh, you're able to see my screen?
No.
Yes. Okay, great. Oh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, this item is, uh, similar to the, uh, uh, presentation that Pamela did to the city council last evening on the new state laws plus some existing state laws. And it's always good to, uh, even if you're familiar with some of the, uh, some of the housing laws, it's always good, uh, you know, to, to have refreshers as well. So we'll cover, tonight we'll cover some, uh, a couple of the new laws plus some of the existing laws. And I'll also be explaining, um, some of the, uh, some of the things, some of the types of inquiries that we're receiving, um, and the types of projects that, uh, may be coming through, uh, that are utilizing some of these state laws. So let's see. I can get, there we go. So as I mentioned, uh, well, uh, the objective is to provide an overview this evening. Um, and then, uh, and an explanation of how these laws can restrict some of the ability of the city to regulate certain projects. So our agenda, the agenda tonight includes some background. Uh, we'll talk about SB nine, SB ten, accessory dwelling units, uh, SB thirty-five, which is expedited processing, the Housing Accountability Act, SB three thirty, state density bonus law, and finally concluding with, uh, any questions that you have. Uh, so, um, the, as, as you know, uh, the cities and municipalities, including San Bruno, uh, are able to regulate development and, and implement development standards through the general plan, through zoning, through voter approval. Also, uh, in San Bruno's case, uh, you have the transit corridors plan, which is a plan for mixed-use development along San Bruno's corridors. And that, that document has very specific standards, uh, about, uh, development and development massing and, uh, so forth. Um, and these laws, of course, strike a balance between non-existing development while, uh, also basically maintaining the quality of life for the community. Uh, the new state laws, however, supersede some of these local regulations. Uh, they serve to streamline and expedite review processes. Uh, they limit the applicability of zoning, um, in some cases, and they waive certain development standards, uh, such as parking height setbacks and so forth. Um, and again, the aim of the state laws is to increase, uh, production of housing. So, uh, with the, um, overview of housing laws, we'll start with Senate Bill nine. And Senate Bill nine was, uh, just recently adopted into law. Governor Newsom signed this on September sixteenth, and it'll take effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. The legislation allows for single-family owned lots, uh, anywhere within a jurisdiction, uh, to have up to four units. Uh, this includes all the units types such as duplex, an accessory dwelling unit, a junior accessory dwelling unit, uh, as permitted by the existing ADU laws. Um, it will prohibit any discretionary review. That means, uh, any type of review by the ARC, the Planning Commission, or the, the city council. And review can only be through a building permit based on standards that the city has in place. So the, the one that's, I think, the most concerning is that this law would allow for the subdivision of residential property into two lots, each with a minimum of twelve hundred square feet. And, um, each, so you could build a duplex structure on each of the newly created lots. Uh, there is a provision in the law that states that if you are subdividing, you have to subdivide, uh, roughly proportionate to the size of the lot, uh, based on a maximum forty, sixty percent split. So you can do fifty, fifty, forty, sixty, or anything in between, but you can't do, uh, take twenty percent of the lot area and then leave eighty percent. So, uh, so it's twelve hundred square feet, um, is the minimum, and then the, the roughly proportional, uh, split. This will preempt any city zoning standards and apply to most residential neighborhoods across the state. Um, and so this, basically the jurisdiction has to allow units of at least eight hundred square feet in size. Uh, for parking, um, it prohibits, uh, off-street parking requirements to no more than one parking space per unit. That's all that can be required. If the property is located within a half a mile of high-quality transit, in, in San Bruno's case, the Samtrans bus lines on El Camino Real, Caltrain or Bart, or car-share vehicles available within a block, no street, no street parking spaces would be required for units. Uh, and it does, the law does encourage new dwelling units to be compatible with existing neighborhood-scale homes, meaning modifications to property need to be in keeping, uh, with the appearance of the neighborhood. Say here. Um, I, I hope that this, uh, this, these graphics are not, uh, meant to alarm you, and I think they may be, um, uh, you know, go a bit far. Uh, but the one on the left, you can see, uh, shows an existing single-family residential neighborhood. And then the, the, uh, diagram below shows, uh, potential development under SB nine. I think that the, the mass, the boxes and the massing that are showing is a bit aggressive and, uh, probably overdone, but it, it, it's, you know, I think it's, it's just designed to help convey, uh, what, you know, visually what might happen. Uh, the next image, um, the before and after SB nine. So there are potentially a number of ways individuals could subdivide their lots, uh, either with, uh, you know, subdividing off the back of the lot with some sort of an easement, or, uh, splitting the lot into, uh, directly from the street. Uh, you know, so those are some of the, some of the possible ways people might use this law. However, um, it's, it's worth noting that, uh, some research has been done by the Turner Center in Berkeley, um, looking at, you know, all of the lots within the state and also looking at larger cities, including San Bruno. And they, and basically, you know, they're looking at it from an economic standpoint, whether, uh, you know, the, the cost and value of adding a unit versus what it can be, you know, rented for, um, you know, whether that makes sense. Uh, and they see that, you know, for San Bruno, that would mean no more than five hundred, uh, these types of units during the, the life of the law. Uh, but our staff's feeling is that most homeowners who are interested in having an additional unit on the property would be, uh, looking more at the ADU or the junior ADU option rather than subdividing their property. Subdivision, uh, requires, you know, hiring an engineer and a lot of additional costs that most homeowners are probably not interested in pursuing. And then they have to go through a subdivision process with the city. In addition to that, uh, one of the, 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 one of the problems that we see with the law is that it creates, or can create a number of building code conflicts. So for example, uh, the building code for residential construction requires that you maintain a five-foot setback from any openings, uh, such, such as doors, windows, along a building. And if you go closer than that, those openings have to be fire-rated, um, you know, or they have to be eliminated. So, um, and for residential homes, you need ingress and egress out of windows and around the perimeter of a structure. So, um, subdivision, I think people will find, great, will create, that will create a lot of conflicts, uh, in these types of, of, uh, uh, structures. So time, time will tell how this will play out. But again, uh, you know, we feel that the, that most people are gonna go for ADUs and junior ADUs. Uh, Senate Bill ten is the, is also another bill that Governor Newsom signed into law and also takes effect January first, twenty twenty-two. This law is, is optional for cities. So it's not, it's, it's a tool for cities who wish to increase, uh, single-family residential, uh, zoning, uh, intensity, uh, close to transit. So what it does is it exempts, um, uh, rezonings of single-family lots to small, multifamily housing structures, uh, of up to ten units, um, you know, with, in close proximity of transit. So the act, the act of rezoning would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So it just provides a tool for cities that want to do that. So there's no, there's no requirement that, that cities do this, um, or, you know, or, you know, take on these types of rezonings unless they really want to. Uh, so this is kind of a, a, a summer, summer slide. Again, not to, not to, not to concern, hopefully scare you too much. Um, it just tries to show how you, you know, you could have a, a number of, if, if you did, uh, an SB ten rezoning of a residential neighborhood close to transit, and then with the effects of SB nine, you know, the picture on the right shows what a kind of a mixture neighborhood, uh, could look like, uh, you know, in that situation. Um, just, uh, this, the, uh, you know, the ADU laws, um, have been in effect for a number of years and, um, they were recently updated in twenty twenty, and then the city of San Bruno adopted the, the, essentially the state law for accessory dwelling units. And, um, so it allows for accessory dwelling units and, uh, junior accessory dwelling units, which are within a structure, um, to be built in, in a jurisdiction. So within San Bruno, uh, prior to the law change, uh, I think the city was averaging about ten to thirteen, uh, accessory dwelling units in twenty twenty. The city experienced this spike in, um, ADU production. There were forty-three units, uh, created. And then in twenty twenty-one, and we're not even done with the year yet, it's an additional forty-three, uh, applications that we've received. And again, those are ministerial, so they're, uh, processed by just a billing permit. And, uh, you know, so those, uh, the planning, the Architecture View Committee or the Planning Commission don't, don't end up seeing those, those applications. And just a reminder that the accessory dwelling units can be detached, attached, interior, or, uh, also be a conversion of a garage space or other existing space. So Senate Bill thirty-five is, um, a streamlined affordable housing law. Uh, it was enacted in twenty seventeen and became acted, uh, effective in, in January first of twenty eighteen. It allows eligible residential projects to be processed ministerially, uh, meaning without a review by decision-making bodies, uh, in urbanized areas where cities did not produce enough housing to meet their regional housing needs assessment numbers, uh, in the current housing cycle. So for San, San Bruno, you know, did not meet its current, uh, arena, um, allocation by no fault of the cities. You know, again, the cities are only required to designate properties, uh, for housing development within the, the housing element cycle. And then it's up to the, you know, basically, uh, private developers and the development community to come forward to develop those sites. So, but, you know, be that what it is, um, uh, you know, most, most jurisdictions in the state are in the same, uh, situation, uh, meaning that, uh, they have to basically accept these SB thirty-five type of projects. Um, so these projects can only be reviewed by what are called objective design standards. Those are any standards that the city has in place at the time the application is made. Um, in the case of San Bruno, the, the city is fortunate to have a, uh, transit corridor specific plan, which is the location of where many of these types of applications may be made. Uh, time will tell how, how, how it plays out. Um, but, uh, anyway, that's, uh, that's the basis of, uh, Senate Bill thirty-five. Um, there are some timeframes within the law where jurisdictions have essentially six days to review the, the application for their, these objective design standards. And, um, and then, uh, another thirty days to, uh, basically review the application if it's under a hundred and fifty, uh, dwelling units. And, um, you know, so that, so there's some very tight timeframes here. And I, and also no parking, um, as mentioned, as shown in the slide, if it's, if the project's within a half mile of transit. So the Housing Accountability Act and Senate Bill, uh, three thirty were enacted into law in twenty seventeen and amended in twenty twenty-one. And, uh, it applies to any, uh, any developments of two or more units and, um, a number of other, uh, type of things, types, types of residential developments. Um, and, I'm sorry, I apologize here. My, my cursor's a little too, too, too easy to move here. Um, so it, it, it affects the jurisdiction's ability to approve it or disapprove development. And, uh, the only, uh, standard is whether, that can be applied is whether the jurisdiction can prove that the, uh, development will have an unavoidable impact on public health and safety. Um, so, so as you can see, it's the kind of the five main points, uh, on the bottom of the slide. It limits the jurisdiction's ability to disprove projects, uh, prevents jurisdictions from increasing fees after an application is submitted. Um, they are, they're, it limits the number of public hearings to five, um, you know, in the case of jurisdictions that have multiple subcommittees, uh, creates a permit streamlining process, uh, and also, uh, prevents cities and counties from creating building limits, um, such as a, a, you know, a moratorium on the number of units that could be, uh, could be built within a period. The state density bonus law has, uh, is, has been, uh, been used, is starting to be used more and more by jurisdictions. Um, and the way it works is that a developer can exceed the maximum density, uh, within a, a local jurisdiction's plan. Um, and they can do so, uh, they can get more units, uh, based on the, the level of, number of affordable units and the, and the, the, um, the depth of the affordability. Uh, so, and it's based on a sliding scale. Uh, and there were recent amendments to the, to the density bonus law in twenty twenty that, uh, even provide, uh, greater, uh, uh, incentives for developers that are more, uh, more units for developers up to, uh, eighty percent, an eighty percent density bonus for certain types of one hundred percent affordable, uh, projects, uh, and it's, and including senior housing projects. So that's a significant difference from what a local jurisdiction's zoning, um, and developments. So that's a significant difference from what, uh, local jurisdictions zoning, um, and development standards would allow. So that's, uh, that's significant. Um, in the case, I, I think I'll make it, uh, just make a comment that's pertinent to San Bruno. So under our, uh, transit corridors plan, uh, we have a height limit of seventy feet uh, for the transit, or in a development zone along Al Camino, for example, on San Bruno Avenue. And, uh, the, there, there is no, uh, density maximum if the lot's more than twenty thousand square feet. So what, uh, so the, so the developer may, may, may not approach the city if they are developing one of those, in one of those areas, uh, to actually get more units. In some jurisdictions, they say there's a density limit on the number of units. But what they may do instead is just ask for, uh, what are called incentives and concessions uh, from various zoning standards. Um, they may also ask for waivers or reductions of development standards or a reduced parking ratio. However, parking, some types of parking, um, standards are, uh, like, for example, if you're, uh, close to, to transit, cities are already limited to how many parking spaces they can require, uh, in those situations. And, um, you know, again, it's, it's, it would be up to the city to, um, you know, to, to demonstrate that there's a health, safety, welfare impact, uh, to the project. If, if there's a, you know, when, when one of these, uh, uh, concessions is asked for or waivers. Okay, I know I've provided you with an immense amount of information. And so, uh, you know, would be happy to open it up, uh, for any questions you have. Um, and I don't know if we've got anyone, uh, from the public, uh, present at this time. I see Commissioner, Commissioner Madden's hand was raised.
Yeah, um, couple of questions, uh, the height limit. Uh, a lot of buildings I've worked on, because they're near airports, they had a height limit that superseded anything, uh, that a particular city had. Is there anything like that, being, you know, so close to SFO, that would supersede any of these height exceeding, uh, provisions that you talked about?
Uh, that's a very good question. No, there, you cannot exceed a, um, you know, an A, established height, height limit.
Do you know how far that extends? Is it just one-on-one or is it further into the city?
Well, the, um, the city, there's a conical surface, uh, that extends up from the runways. So there's, you know, so the height, the allowed height, uh, varies depending, you know, how close you are to the airport. The other, the other, um, component is the noise contour. So, uh, you know, portions of town are within the seventy to seventy-five decibel noise contour. So, uh, based on the Airport Land Use Commission, um, standards, uh, and plan, uh, residential's an incompatible use. However, the city could still approve housing in those areas with sound, you know, mitigation and an override of the ALUC. So developers can still propose projects within those areas. However, there's those additional hurdles. But, but the height limit, um, cannot, that conical surface, um, cannot be exceeded.
Is there a, a map maybe in the future, a future meeting you could present us showing where that?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have, we have, yeah, we have the maps from the airport plan.
Okay. And then I had a, a question on Slide seven and Slide nine. I just want to make sure I'm understanding right.
Okay, let me, uh, I guess I could go back to, if I could find it.
Okay, so, yeah, so, um, the right-hand side, you've got the before SB nine and after SB nine. And, and, uh, obviously the buildings are different, but the orange one on the right also shows a whole bunch of cars. Um, uh, where the other one's done. Uh, was there anything, uh, particular why we're doing that other than, I, I know you mentioned the parking, off-site parking or something is, so those restrictions have been lax. But is there anything in there about, like, only people who live in these lots should be able to park their cars? There like a sticker program or something? Cause I could see this getting really out of hand with, uh, so many different people living in a fifty-foot wide lot, uh, with, you know, two or three cars in each lot. Um, and, you know, it could be a recipe for disaster. So, so I'm just wondering what is there, am I, should I in, not be inferring something by the, 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 the number of cars shown on the right? Or?
So, so first I'll, I'll start with a disclaimer. These graphics are not, you know, ones that we produced. There were, there were ones that we, uh, found from other sources. Uh, I think the, the point is that, you know, you could definitely see, uh, additional, uh, you know, you will, I'm sure you will see additional cars, uh, associated with these, uh, with these types of units. Uh, again, the state just restricts the fact that you can only require one covered or uncovered space per unit. Um, so if someone does choose to build four units, they could satisfy their parking with a two-car garage, two-car driveway, or, or a tandem, you know, a tandem situation, um, as well. Uh, so yes, you could see this. Uh, one, one thing to just mention is that the, uh, you know, the city does have in its municipal code a, uh, a, uh, I guess a, an allowance for residential parking permits. Uh, but that has, that would have to be initiated, you know, by a neighborhood, uh, to the planning commission. I'm sorry, to the city council. So there is an, it is a process to, you know, with the, with the majority of, of residents within a neighborhood to request, uh, residential parking permits. However, um, the, the difficult part of that is you cannot use those permits, um, necessarily to restrict new residents from parking or having access to those permits. So, um, how, you know, getting, you know, putting a neighborhood under parking permits uh, may not help solve the, the issue for existing residents. So, um, you know, again, these are things that the states, um, uh, you know, doesn't allow jurisdictions to do.
Okay, uh, one more on this slide. So there's a couple of lots on here where the original house, instead of splitting into two smaller houses, is just getting bigger. Um, are there any, are there any, uh, changes to what, uh, you know, if he's making a single-family home larger? Like, are the setback requirements all the same? I know we have a bunch of rules. Almost everything that comes to the planning commission is because someone's enlarging their house fifty percent more than what it is now. Um, seems like, uh, that's pretty much the only type of project we'd be reviewing from now on. Uh, is that a fair statement?
Yes, so, uh, you know, again, with the allowance for, uh, um, exit ADUs and junior ADUs that, um, uh, you know, that, that basically only require building permits and, and they have to be allowed and permitted by the jurisdiction. Um, you know, we can't, you know, review them against the, the city's residential time guidelines and, and floor area requirements. And I know, uh, the ARC just recently reviewed a home that had an internal, um, crawl space that was not used as habitable space. However, um, you know, in those types of situations, if the homeowner comes in with a permit for, uh, a junior A, ADU, uh, within the footprint of the building, you know, we're required to issue the permit. So, uh, the, you know, so floor area issue, um, um, you know, again, such these laws, I think, will, um, will kind of somewhat bypass some of the city's floor area restrictions or reviews related to additional floor area.
Right, I guess what I meant is that, oh, if you just want to make your house bigger and not put an ADU or junior ADU, all the same rules that we've been following still apply, correct?
Yes, correct, correct.
So the potential for abuse is for someone to put a junior ADU or attached ADU, get everything approved, and then knock down some walls and make it just part of their house, correct? Nobody's got that unless someone wheels on them. Okay, all right, uh, on Slide nine. Go that one. So this, these lots with ten-unit apartment, uh, in red next to an existing house that is not altered in any way. This is really the law? I mean, this could ruin neighborhoods, I mean.
Yeah, so, um, so, uh, as I mentioned, SB ten, uh, is, is not, uh, required by jurisdictions. It's only, it only provides a tool for, uh, environmental reviews, uh, uh, process of a zone change. So if, if, if jurisdictions desire to rezone residential, single-family residential neighborhoods close to transit or, uh, small apartment buildings, um, they, the jurisdiction can, uh, can basically set the rules for that type of rezoning. So it doesn't need to be for ten units. If, if, if the jurisdiction wants to say, allow for five units or six units and stay within that area and rezone an area, that the process of, of rezoning is, would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So all, all it's doing is it's, 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 uh, removing a hurdle in the rezoning process for jurisdictions that want to do this. But it's, again, it's not required.
Okay, uh, that's good because I could see this crushing property values. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Arus, I see your hand is up here. Next in line.
Um, yeah, I, I'm a little disappointed in the, the images that are sourced from these slides because they're from groups that were lobbying against the laws and they're actively misinformational. I mean, the SB ten one in particular, it being a completely opt-in process. Um, you know, if you don't want to zone for ten-unit apartments in a neighborhood, then don't zone for that. It's, it's giving cities a tool that actually gives them more flexibility, not less. Um, on the height limits, uh, I know we have some, you know, five, six-story apartments down in Burlingame at a comparable distance from the airport. I mean, I don't know if you do know offhand, but I was curious to the answer to, uh, Commissioner Madden's question. Like, are we anywhere close to hitting that surface? My understanding is we're probably not anywhere but maybe in the northeast corner of the city.
Yeah, I, we'd have to, to check, to check that.
Okay, but yeah, my, my back of the envelope, my rough understanding is that even with, I mean, whatever bonuses, whatever maximum you could propose, like, that we're nowhere near hitting that surface and it's not going to be relevant. Um, on the SB thirty-five topic, I did just, I mean, if, if you look at what we proposed to do in the, the transit borders plan, I think you would probably agree with, again, a little back of the envelope math, that if we had actually built out the transit border to the density we said we wanted to, whatever that was, six, seven, eight years ago, um, we would not be behind on our arena numbers and we would not be subject to SB thirty-five. Would you generally agree with that?
Uh, yes, cause the, yeah, the build-out, I believe, is about a hundred units of the, from the, um, from the transit quarters plan and our, and the, um, yeah, it would have, it would have essentially, you know, um, yeah, depending on the level of affordability.
It would have, yeah, I mean, again, fair, depending on the inclusion of DI units and so on. But the, the raw number of units is more than that. And so I, I think, you know, it, I'm not super pleased to see us lose discretion, but there's a question of how we use our discretion. Um, I believe the density bonus law, I don't know if you know the history of this. I think my understanding is that it's based in a fairly successful San Diego program. It was sort of piloted down in SoCal and they, it was adopted at the state level because San Diego was showing better progress on producing affordable units compared to, uh, LA and San Francisco and Sacramento, that that's sort of the, I don't know if you're sort of familiar with any of that history or?
No, I apologize. I don't have the history, but.
But my understanding is there were, uh, there was evidence for this being an effective way to, to help produce the affordable units that I think everybody agrees we need.
Um, and I, and I, I, one thing I did want to include in my presentation, but it is, uh, since the city of San Bruno has a fifteen percent affordable requirement, um, you know, built into the code, uh, you know, so developers have to provide those units. So I think that's also going to incentivize that density, naturally incentivize density bonuses, uh, since they can basi- basically, um, you know, offset the cost or of, of those units, um, you know, that they're already required to provide, so.
I think that's my last, um, comment or something you maybe want to clarify. My understanding of the Housing Accountability Act, from what I have read, um, so I think the, probably the most notorious application of the Housing Accountability Act is the saga that was chronicled in the New York Times about the terraces of Lafayette, uh, in which the city and developer had agreed to downscale a project. The developer basically didn't want the headache and attempted to agree to downsize a project that had been proposed, that met all of the objective standards that was within the zoning. And the Housing Accountability Act lawsuit was brought on behalf of the potential tenants of the project, not on behalf of the developer, that even though the developer wanted to make the concession, a private law firm can bring on behalf of the future tenants, a like, we would like this housing to exist because it will make our rent cheaper. And so it's important to remember that the Housing Accountability Act is not a tool of developers. It is a tool that the state of California has given to create a right of action on behalf of the people of California.
All right, Arus, did you have anything else or was that, that it?
No, I just, I felt like it was important that we get some of these things clear.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, I see you have your hand up. Kelly had her hand up first, so if you wouldn't mind, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, um, mine is fairly simple. Um, Michael had mentioned the lifespan of the bill when talking about SB nine and I didn't realize that there were lifespans on bills. I just figured it was this magical thing that lasted forever. And I was wondering if, how that relates to SB nine and the other bills.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for the misunderstanding. So the bill itself doesn't, doesn't have, you know, it doesn't, uh, sunset. So it's, you know, good, good until it's amended. But the, the research that was done by the Turner Center, uh, was just projecting out to, they, what they did is that was done by the Turner Center was just projecting out, what they did is they took, you know, kind of all of the entire state of California. They first looked at all the feasible lots that may be feasible to the subdivision under S B nine. So that kind of brings the pool of lots down. So for San Bruno, it went from, say, eighty-six hundred down to eighty-four hundred feasible type lots. And then they looked at market conditions, you know, you know, housing prices, construction prices, and, you know, and then also kind of the, you know, how many people realistically would want to pursue something like this. So the number, again, the number that was presented for San Bruno was was five hundred. So that, that number just simply means that, you know, at the current time, you know, maybe up to five hundred of the eighty-six hundred residential lots, you know, may pursue some type of subdivision or additional, additional units. And, you know, we've already seen, you know, well over a hundred A D Us. So again, what, and A D Us are probably much more attractive to the average homeowner than the S B nine process. Again, that's just, you know, that was just information that was produced by the Turner Center.
Great. Thank you.
Was that it, Kelly?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Mary, please, if you would.
Ah, so, you know, it's so interesting to listen to all of this because, you know, as a commissioner for a long time, there's a way, a culture and a training and knowledge we receive along the way, and the planning commission institutes, and going to them and how lay of land and progression, how all the planning goes with it. And so I can't help but think about this. It's just a whole new way of thinking and what communities will look like. And so trying to stay on a positive side to think about, okay, how can we plan accordingly? And I'll just look at this project by project, but looking, you know, looking at this from a bigger picture. And, and, and it really, I mean, there's a huge change here, and also our demographics. There was a time, I don't know specifically right now, but it was a time that it was an older population, or, you know, one time it was very family-oriented. There's just different trends that have happened over a lifetime. And so looking at this, what does this do? Does this bring in younger people? Does this bring more aging population? What's going to take place? And so I'd like to think about this, to saying, okay, it's a law. We don't have a choice. So be able to think about it rather than from a negative point of view and thinking, okay, not in my backyard. And I just counted, because I own four commercial piece of property on Santa Inez, and, and my, my school building, it's a private school, has been there for seventy years. Oh, actually, the school's been there some years, but nineteen sixty-two. And so I know that community, it was there forty-five years, living it every day. And there are nine streets, I counted them, nine streets that have such a huge mixture of apartment buildings, a variety of unique ways of of living in that space, and we, you know, come here, but it just, it came about along the way. And I, I hope that as this progresses, that we're not going to be doing this on a, on a application by application, but taking a look at, how do we want to develop this? And we have had these long conversations, I mean, I've been on the commission thirty-one years, and long conversations about San Mateo Avenue, Shalhets, and different things being done, and yet we're not moving forward in the way, you know, the discussions have tried, tried to think about our different communities within our city. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a huge deal. It's a huge deal to think about this. And, and, and we don't have a choice, but we do have a choice on how we want to give a big, a bigger picture thought, study sessions, figuring things out. And maybe that isn't a choice. I really don't know that. You know, this is new to us, but I'd like to think about as they come up. You know, when I look at that slide seven and slide nine, I mean, they look, I can remember on Sneeze Lane, when it used to be nursery, a row of nursery, nursery places, and it was all just buildings where there was a lot of greenery and landscaping. It was all just nurseries. And then there was the, the Orchid Place on Al Camino, I can't think of the name right now, but, and then we had that whole development, and that was done really well for that, a number of years. And so just thinking about this, because we're going to have wild-up people, we're going to have people kind to meetings. We're, as commissioners, we're going to be hearing a lot about not am I about the odd kind of thing. And since we don't have a choice, how can we make it so it is, we're walking forward, moving forward as a community to make these things happen? You know, I, one of the slides talked about affordability. It talked about just different ways of putting things together. But when I see those slides, seven and nine, I grew up in the, in the mission, my husband grew up in Hunter's Point's project area, and we were across different projects. We saw what happens when there's massive kinds of things. You know, it's a different era, a different timing, and I'm not at all discriminating, but I'm pointing out the fact, masses of people create a different energy. And so to be sure that we have community parks, different things taking place, so it's bringing a community together versus just plopping, you know, to me, this looked like barracks, you know, it looked like, and I know you got these slides, they're not, they're not what's planned, but they, and also the other thing that I saw was, we have been trained to look at much more greenery, much more, you know, percentage of, of, you know, permeable space, and all kinds of things to make an environment look much more curb appeal, attractive, sustainable, all those types of things. And the other slide showed a tremendous amount of reduction in, in, in that greenery, landscaping. So I, I just think that if we start taking these projects one by one, we're going to end up with a bunch of chopped up kinds of stuff. And so I'd like to be sure that it's a community, the city of San Bruno community, the city with a heart, that we're really thinking about this from a bigger picture point of view. The thought of, of not doing it with some, you know, and our, you know, commission changes and takes place, but I don't think anyone would be against saying, let's look at this, a livable place together. And it's huge, I think this is a huge change in a way of living in our community. And we are changing. Life is different than it was. You know, I'm old enough to be able to speak to those kinds of things. And I can also see that it'd be a great, a great opportunity to create wonderful spaces for children. You, when you start having massive places like this, you start having what feels like unsafe condition, and then you're starting to hibernate in houses, children unable to play outside. You start to change your, your, your city, your communities. So I think that, from a conscious, you know, being conscious in this process, I can't be unconscionable in doing, in not doing something without giving it some big picture planning. So anyway, that's what I have to say, and I, I love change, but I love change with good thought, with planning. And so some things I never want to change, but I think that change is inevitable, and we can't ever stop building and changing. A community will do that. We can't. We will stagnate, and we will become a town of no growth. And, you know, I know what happens to towns of zero opportunity or people who just really look at, no, just flop, no. I'm, I'm excited to think about our city. It's exciting to think about children and families, because that's really, really what it's about. Children and families become senior citizens at one point. And anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Was there anyone else here that would say before I speak? Anyone? Okay. So I have two items, Michael. The first one's kind of a stupid question, but I, and I know I've asked it before, but are A D Us counted in the R E N A numbers?
Yes, you can count them in, in the R E N A. So I, you know, as you know, San Bruno has a huge R E N A number of sixty-one hundred fifty-five, I believe, is the number that we need to show locations for in the next, next housing element cycle. We're allowed to have used an average of the past several years. So, you know, so right now, that average is looking like about forty-three or forty units than projected over an eight-year period. So, you know, possibly three hundred. We can, you know, count those. But, you know, and we're, we'll be, you know, next year, you know, after the first year, it's the year of the housing element. So you'll be getting, you know, we'll be having study sessions and other types of meetings surrounding the housing element and its preparation and the housing sites. And we, I think we may try to have, I think, we're going to probably start with the city council at the end of January with a, with a, a study session to kind of initiate the, the housing element process and the housing element sites. So sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm rambling as an answer to your question. So the answer is yes.
Okay. So the next question I have is, we're doing a lot of legislation here and pushing for development. What can we do to encourage people to build these things? I mean, we can legislate ten thousand or a hundred thousand units, but if no one's inspired to build these things, if it's not economically sensible for someone to build, they're not going to build it. So what can we do to make it easier for people or more incentivized for people to build these things?
Well, I, I think we're, the city's in the midst of a, is going to be in the midst of a very large building boom. Even, I've only been here a few weeks, and the number of calls that I'm getting, you know, for housing sites and development of sites within the Transit Corridors Plan, you know, the things, things are, are starting to happen. And I, you know, I would say that you, the community has done, I think, the best it can with, with, and I think it's a very good, really, all that really is needed is the Transit Corridor Plan, because, you know, developers look for, look for plans like this, that, that lay out the locations for development, you know, for them. So, you know, a lot of the, the new housing laws, you know, require that the, the property be zoned for, you know, have, have the ability to be zoned for, or have the ability to be built for residential or mixed use at densities that, you know, make sense for the developers. So I think, again, I think you're going to be seeing, you've opened the door through the Transit Corridor Plan.
Okay, thank you. And then the last part of my questions this evening is thinking about this from the staff's point of view. This is coming, what, January twenty-two?
Yeah.
I believe. So I imagine myself standing behind the planning counter, having to answer questions from citizens about all of this. And I'm just wondering if we can take maybe some of tonight's program, the slideshow, or put together a webpage of some sort, so that we make it easier for staff, for them to be able to refer folks to the changes, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just thinking about trying to make things easier for staff. I mean, there's probably going to be more than one or two people who go to the counter and want to know why there's something happening next door. And if you had some, you have something already created that you could just refer them to, it might save staff a lot of time.
No, that's a good point.
Cool. I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything before we move on?
For the chair?
Please, Kelly.
Kind of in the spirit of what you were just talking about, I think it would be great to also maybe get ahead and, and help to educate people in our community about these changes could potentially mean to us. And so when things, when developments do start trickling in, that look different than people may expect, is how we can kind of educate them on, on why and how and what it means to them. I know that the city managers, what are these things called? Sorry, my vocabulary is gone now. I used the words already. His newsletters, his newsletters tend to cover some pertinent things. That might be a nice way, something of that, of that nature, to, to reach out about these kinds of changes or maybe, actually, maybe the newspapers will do it. But, sorry, just in that same spirit, but I throw that out there.
Okay, thank you.
For the chair?
Mary.
Since, since this is going, you know, starting in January, we know what the energy was when the Mills Park project was in place. And there were so, so many people that had said they hadn't even heard about it. And we had had many community meetings. We're going to have that happen. But because if it is going to go into implement in January, then it's a very short timeframe. So I think part of it is that talking points for us would be really useful, if there's any opportunity to have ways that we could be, speak from the point of things that are not, that are beyond our control, since it is, it is, it is a law. So that way, we're at least on the same page about being able to get the message out there. We have our own opinions and our own feelings on that. But I think as, I think that it's always, it's my responsibility as a commissioner to try to convey as much information from a point of not creating energy that's going to stir up, but to educate. And, and then listen to people's feelings, listen to what's taking place, and, and try to walk in that direction. Thank you.
Got it. Michael, maybe we could look at making that sort of information available to all the commissioners, so that, like Mary says, we too, when people approach us and talk to us, we have a, a resource to direct them to perhaps?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, just repackage, and I, you know, I apologize, we weren't able to give you a staff report for, for this information, we did one for the, the city council, but that only got approved late Friday afternoon by the city manager, so we weren't able to tell, to get it to you. But what we could do is just repackage a summary of, you know, of these laws for you, you know, just so you know that they, how they apply. You know, and I, I did want to mention too, that we did, if you had, if you did either participate in the meeting, or I believe it may have been on the, in the city manager's newsletter, the city has received, we have received our first S B thirty-five application for a hundred thirty-six unit project at seven thirty-two through seven forty, Al Camino, it's the vacant lot to the south of the former Toyota building. So that, you know, is a, is a, is a, is a project that, you know, staff will be processing. And again, it's, it's not subject to discretionary approval. So we're currently reviewing that internally. But there, there are some images on the website for that, for that project.
Thank you. Commissioner Harmon, I'm looking at the expression on your face. Did you have something?
Yeah, for the chair, I, I did, I mean, since we were getting into that S B thirty-five project, not that our opinion is going to matter in the end because of how it's being processed, but, you know, the, the Mills Park project was shortly before my time on the commission. And I, I really believe that that was a, you know, as acrimonious as it was, it's a better project for the input of the public and the planning commission. That I, I think, you know, some of the things, like the way it's stepped down to protect light access on the backside towards the neighborhood, you know, there's like a lot of features of it that are good. And if you compare what was the, the S B thirty-five project that was sort of held as a threat, I mean, my impression from talking to people is it was purely a threat, and they didn't actually want to spend the money to fully do all the structural engineering to produce it, but that they wanted to hold it over the city to take their project finished. But because of how that saga went, we're now probably going to see more S B thirty-five projects unless we can get our act together to produce the housing element next year and actually start building things and meet our R E N A numbers. That's, that's what we're going to get. We're going to have featureless boxes instead of, you know, attractive, step-down, you know, carved-in public parks. So I was like, it's really important that we hit our numbers. So I was like, it's really important that we hit our numbers, basically. Because that, that's how we get to keep the discretion and how we get better projects where we have the input.
Thank you for your insight, Commissioner. Got it.
Um, yes, through the chair. All right, so you had just mentioned that by producing our numbers, that will help to, help to keep us out of the SB thirty-five types of thing, I'm sorry, can you elaborate on that? Is this SB thirty-five, is that when, when you're behind on your numbers, that kicks in?
Yeah, and so, yeah, so the way, the way this will probably play out is that, you know, we're, we are in the, you know, the, basically the last year of our current housing element with, with the lower, lower RENA number. So when our, the new housing element with this, the six thousand units, sixty-one hundred units goes into effect in, you know, in twenty twenty-two, we're going to have, you know, H C D, Housing and Community Development is going to be evaluating our progress towards meeting that number at, at some intervals along the eight-year cycle of, of that next housing element. So it may not be until we're four years into that cycle to see if we've produced, say, you know, over three thousand of those units before, you know, we may, that we may not then be, you know, you know, subject to SB thirty-five. So, you know, so that's, you know, that, you know, that's how, that's how it may play out. So it may be a very long time before, you know, before, there's, there's, and by then, there may be, you know, with the number of housing law changes that are occurring every year, you know, it may be a whole different kind of environment at that point. So it's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to say.
Okay, so we're in SB thirty-five territory now, and it may be
Correct.
at least midway through the next housing element's eight-year cycle, that we may actually see relief from that.
Yeah, so I would say at least the next five years will be accept, you know, will be needing to accept these projects.
Thank you. All right, anyone else before we move on? Commissioner Madden?
Yeah, like Commissioner Harmon, the Mills Park project was before my time on this commission. But, you know, what's stopping that developer from walking away, I don't want to do this anymore? Forming a new LLC, coming back and doing a massive original design? Is there anything stopping them from doing that?
I, you know, I don't know, I know that's a complicated project before my time as well, so I, you know, I don't have a, have a good answer on that one.
Okay.
Through the chair.
The thought, this, this thing could, you know, I hear everybody saying, but I think there's a lot of potential for, you know, like just in my neighborhood in Rollingwood, if people start splitting their lots up, I could see a lot of people just doing that, selling and leaving, and it's just not the same neighborhood. You know, it's, that's something we can really correct, it seems, but I don't think it's going to make any people less angry just because we have some YouTube video, oh, it's out of our control, or here, go look at this on the website, there's nothing we can do. I think it's, it's just a kind of a blanket plan that is a little too, too general for my liking anyway. But it sounds like we're stuck with it and I could see a lot of abuse.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden, anybody else? Mary?
Yeah, you know, a number of years ago, on San Benito, right behind my school, there are houses that had split, there were split houses, split owners of those houses. And for the longest time, the developer was George Jordan, and he, he developed the two houses and he, and he had hoped it would just, one family would move into them, couldn't sell them, couldn't sell them, so he split them. And there was a couple of them that were split that way. And it's just interesting to watch how they've worked it out. And going to Australia, my children live there, and going to Australia, there's a huge amount of that going down a small little pathway and there's houses there in that area. If it's built under those conditions, for that purpose, it can really work. But if it's, if it's just someone decides just to maximize opportunity, then it creates, it creates a different environment. That's what I was trying to say earlier, I wasn't trying to, when I was saying that before lots I own in San Bruno, there's such a huge mix of development there, apartment buildings, huge houses, lots, lots of apartments and lots of single dwelling mixed right in there. And so whether it's, it's mixed use, I don't know, but I think this is a time that, this is important, just as Commissioner Madden was saying, it will, you know, some of these home, places have larger lots and to start breaking them up into two, it starts to change things. So I look forward to thinking about this in a bigger, in a bigger way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to have one more comment to my fellow commissioners, you know, I just want to say thank you for your efforts up to this point, and I hope all of you continue to remain energized and with the commission because I don't, I don't even know what I want to say, but it's like, I hope that we continue to do the kind of work that we've done up to now. And I don't want to see anyone get disheartened and walk away from the commission because we're all talented people, we all bring a lot to the table. And I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, even though I see changes coming with this new law. So thank you all for being here and being part of this. Does anyone else have anything before we go? Okay, so we'll move on to item six, items from staff. And that would be the November eighteenth ARC, Architectural Review Special Meeting. Any volunteers?
Okay, yeah. Commissioner Johnson's volunteering for that?
I'll do it.
And Chair Passati, okay? And someone else, another?
Was it November eleventh or eighteen?
Eighteen, November eighteen, yeah, it's a special meeting.
Right.
Do you know a topic?
Uh, yes, there's a, we'll be reviewing a, a small property on El Camino Real.
I'm available, you know, if we need people.
And I did check, yeah, I did check the maps and no one has a, a conflict. So, yeah, so we've got, we've got the chair, vice chair and Commissioner Johnson for that meeting. So, so now we would need, we, we, not sure, I, I imagine we will have items for the December A R C meeting. So if I can get three, three volunteers for that, okay, so same two.
What's the date for that meeting? It's December sixteenth, yeah, December sixteenth.
Uh, December sixteenth.
They can volunteer for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You reminded me, our, our A R Cs are six P M. rather than seven P M.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's out of the way. And item seven, public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the commission at this time? Either raise your hand with Zoom or storyline on the phone, please, we'll give you a minute or two to organize. Michael, are you seeing anyone on your side there?
No, no.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item eight, items from members and subcommittee reports, anyone have anything for us this evening? No? All right, with that, we'll move to item nine, which is adjournment, and we will be adjourned until November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Thank you everyone for your hard work this evening, nice to see you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.
All right, take it.